Howdy, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December 14th, and the time is 5:00 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capel City Council. There's a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. We're going to be convening into executive session in the first-floor conference room, and I'll be out shortly to announce that we've recessed from that meeting, and we'll be inviting everyone to join us in work session. We'll be back shortly. Thank you. Good afternoon. The time is 5:21. We have recessed from executive session, and we are going to be convening into work session in the first-floor conference room. The public is welcome to join us.
Because I don't do it anymore, we used to get, Kenny Marchand used to give us an ornament from the White House. And we used to get this ornament.
Stay at home. Yeah, his father was going.
Yeah, they're super cool.
Now I think he's going. Actually, he's staying in San Antonio. There's some parties going on here. Yeah, oh yeah.
I suspect there's a lady involved.
Okay, I don't like the chicken one. If you don't like them, or you do like them?
You don't.
I like the meat one. I just had one. It's got the onion. I didn't look what's inside the chicken. I like when we used to get like chicken skewers. And then we'd get some hummus and eat up.
When they ask you to pick colors in your, or if you like.
All right, the time is 5:22. We're going to be convening into work session. Item A is a discussion regarding the agenda. Anybody have anything they'd like to talk about or ask or on the agenda for today? Bijou?
Yeah, the minutes from last month meeting. I just wanted to follow up with Ashley. You had mentioned at that time that if a council member is on the telephone, if they show their face, they can be present.
If a council member is on the telephone and they show their face, they can be present?
No, you said, so the question, Bob said in his remarks, because we did not disclose something on the public announcement, a council member or mayor cannot be present. And so I just wanted to understand going forward, what is the correct procedure for a person to be on call or online?
They must show their face in order to be counted as present.
Okay.
That is video conferencing.
So that's what you said. And plus, Bob also said we have to disclose to the public there is a disclosure that we have to do. So vote has to be approved?
Yes, we must post that on our agenda. And we will go into it in the future, and we have tonight.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you. That's all.
Just a follow-up question. So if they're not, even though they're calling, you could hear them, technically, they're not present, so they can't really participate? Is that what it comes down?
They cannot vote.
Not vote, but they could participate but not vote, or?
It was a work session discussion, particularly the one that we're talking about in particular. So yes, she was able to talk and discuss but not vote.
Not vote on it?
Correct.
And does that also carry over to regular session if they are not?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, so they have to have their face shown in order to be counted as present and in order to be able to vote.
Vote only, but not participate, still participate even in the regular?
They can listen, and they can give feedback, but they cannot vote. That's, that is the, yes.
Okay. And just for clarification for everyone on the agenda, it was Section 551.127, it reads, "One or more council members or employees may attend this meeting remotely using video conferencing technology." So it's specific to the video conferencing. And that was in place prior to the governor suspending all the rules, and then went back in place, and that was part of, I think Bob was also referring to, we were able to do it differently during COVID.
COVID.
Because the governor relaxed those rules. But this was a rule that was already in place, and so we just hadn't been putting that language on our agendas until Bob brought that up last meeting.
So just to be clear, if, for example, we're not going to be here, we would just have to make sure we let you know ahead of time that we'll be actually either calling in or actually video conferencing in, and then you would have to publish that and then to make sure the public's aware of that?
We're automatically publishing this now.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's what that makes.
Okay.
Kind of, you know.
So for future reference, yes, you do. It's good to let us know, so we'll prepare for it, but it will always be on the agenda. It just wasn't before.
So if you're held up and miss applied or?
In traffic or whatever.
Yeah. Actually participate.
Right. Brianna?
For clarification, since we're all talking about me being gone last time, I guess I was counted absent because I wasn't at the regular session because it wasn't posted, even though I had given notice well in advance that I was going to be out. And then, and I didn't, I asked to be a part of the regular session, but Bob said I couldn't in any way, shape, or form because I wasn't going to be able to vote, and I wasn't going to be able to be counted present.
And we hadn't posted that?
So I only was in the work session.
Yes.
Gotcha. So for everybody's clarification, I was absent last time while I was in Israel and only participated in a work session.
Do you get demerit for that?
I'm sorry?
Do you get demerit for that?
I don't know. We'll find out here in item F.
She can ask me to be given excused absence, though.
But, yes, I tried. I tried to be present.
So clarifying, so now we're posting that you can participate by video conference? Is that?
That's state law, right, and now we're just?
I thought, okay, I guess I was under the impression that that was not an option pre-COVID.
The difference is that it, pre-COVID and now, there still has to be a quorum present in the same location. So if five, if five members have to video in, that's not going to work.
Okay.
So that's what the difference is. Before, you could all be at home and video in, but now there has to be at least a core quorum.
But even, but even pre-COVID,
We couldn't.
You couldn't do any video conferencing, right? Go back through.
There was a, there was a law in place about video conferencing.
Oh.
They just continued to clarify at each legislative session.
Okay, so we have to have a quorum in person?
Yeah, in our quorum, it takes five people.
Okay.
And? Brianna?
Might just to clarify, like before COVID, because a lot of us used to travel a lot too, we, we didn't, it wasn't, I think the state incorrect about non-pleasanly legal perspective, we, we could participate virtually as long as there was a quorum present, but I don't know that the city had the means, the equipment, right, to facilitate that. And so COVID really put that in place for us, so that now that's an option going forward.
Right, because we have, we have telephonic?
Yes.
Because some of you have participated telephonically.
Correct.
But not video.
Okay.
All right, any other agenda items? All right, thank you. Moving on. Item B is a discussion regarding the Capel Chamber of Commerce Comprehensive Marketing Initiative, and I believe Ms. Ellie Braxton Levine is here to speak.
I am. Where do you want me? Okay.
Behind me.
Good evening to everyone. I am Ellie Braxton Levine, and I am the president and CEO of the Capel Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here tonight to request from the city council the ability to be able to use the hotel occupancy tax funds that are available here in Capel to implement an aggressive marketing campaign for Capel and especially the business community here. I gave all of you an outline of what I was going to be talking about, and I'll just go through it really quick. You know, Capel is not a tourist community. There's no one that gets, you know, I've been on a plane in San Francisco and heard the airline attendant say, "Oh, if you have a layover in Dallas, go to Grapevine." They don't say that about Capel, okay? And that's really been by design, from my understanding, because Capel, you know, I tell Mike Land all the time, it's like going to Pleasantville, and it's a beautiful community. However, you know, prior to COVID, we had started a process, you know, Hospitality Council to educate the hotels in the area and the large distribution centers and corporate offices that we have here to educate them on what's available here, so that when they do their big conventions, when they do their big meetings, they use our hotels. They go to our restaurants. They go to our farmer's market. They go to our arts center. And we were on the road there, and then COVID hit. And, and right now, we really just don't know when those businesses are going to be back in full force, if ever. And, and so with that in mind, you know, we've seen our restaurants here really struggle. When I got here in 2018, we had one hotel, and I don't think we had any hotel occupancy tax at the time. We now have five. We do have hotel occupancy tax available. For anyone that's not familiar with that, it's, you know, those are funds that are designated specifically to market the hotels and other, the restaurants and things here in our area. And so we do have those funds available. Knowing what our businesses have been struggling with over the past 18 to 24 months, we have put together a comprehensive plan to hire an outside marketing firm to develop a strategic marketing plan that will bring visitors in to our community, spend their money, and then go home. And, and so, and we want people to stay in our hotels. We want to educate our current community on what's available here in Capel. But we also have over 8 million people that live here in the metroplex that don't know what's available here in Capel. And, and so with that, we put together an RFQ and sent it out to 10 marketing firms that had been recommended our way. And we heard back from four of them. And, and they sent us their, their plans on what they felt they could do here in Capel. And, and basically, you know, it's a strategic marketing firm plan. Develop a brand, an identity, and a strategy to move the Capel businesses and the programs to the forefront of things to do in the metroplex. And, and so with that, I put together some numbers for you there and some results, some, some metrics on what other communities have done utilizing the same sort of strategy. And, and then you also have in front of you what the estimated cost of that will be. And, and then, you know, as I have shown here, if we can increase the visitors in Capel, of course, that's going to increase the business income for Capel, which is of course going to increase our tax revenues, and of course, that's going to increase our city services as well. So it's a big circle of, you know, it's not only going to benefit the businesses, but it's going to benefit the city of Capel as well. And, and I know you guys are going to have a lot of questions. So, you know, I didn't put together a whole big long spiel on, you know, why we should do this. But what I did put together was how we know that the business, that the business is out there for us. You know, I did some studies. The, the city of Dallas states that we receive about 27 million visitors a year that generates $5.2 billion and 8.8 billion in economic impact. And that's in the Dallas area. Another 9.4 million in the Fort Worth area. Tech Dot says that we have 230,000 cars per day that pass this area, and they don't know we're here. And that's on I-635, I-35, another 242,000. And NTTA says, depending on which area you talk to, there's 200,000 to 400,000 cars that pass this area every day that don't know we're here. And so this marketing plan that we're putting together is designed to market Capel to the metroplex right now. And, you know, market our farmer's market, our, our arts center, and the amazing, unique restaurants that we have here, and, and the beautiful area that we have. So that's in a nutshell what I'm here to, to ask you for are those funds. And now I'm ready to take your questions.
Just to add on, in the, if you recall back in July, we talked about the hotel motel tax and the uses, right? And there's a portion of the uses that are supposed to be advertising, marketing, you know, the community and everything along those lines. And, and so I know one of the questions that you would naturally ask is, you know, where would the funding come from that? Well, in our analysis of the hotel motel tax, with the money that's been collected over time, the fact is that we haven't started spending those dollars on marketing purposes. And part of the statute and the law talks about that you are supposed to be spending it on marketing purposes. So this is really the first proposal, because we've never come forward with it in terms of just, we just haven't had the capacity. This is the first proposal to be able to go out and do that. So I believe, Ellie, that's $120,000 to $150,000, let's call it this first year. Is that, is that right?
$120,000 to $150,000, the, we have settled on a firm. The two top ones both said that it would be about $150,000 a year that it would cost to implement the program that, that they feel necessary to market us. And then there's an additional 10% fee that the chamber would charge because we're going to have to have a staff member designated to work with that, that marketing firm. And so it would be at the max $165,000 of what you have available in that fund. And that's an annual right now.
Right.
And that's without sourcing it to a marketing firm.
And this is a, this would be, hopefully it turns into something longer, but this is for the first year?
Yes, this is just for the first year.
This is a one-time ask, understanding that there will be potential of next summer, there'll be the ask for the, for the following year. Also this year, is that for 12 months or is that for nine months?
That's for 12 months, a full 12 months.
So this fiscal year, you know, we only have basically about nine years, nine months left in the fiscal year. So take that number down.
Prorated.
Right, prorated, even though it'd be for continuation, for impact on, on the budget. And then as far as how it could happen, if you were to say tonight, let's go ahead and pursue this, is we would bring back an amended contract with the Chamber of Commerce that would include the provisions for the marketing piece, right? So that they would spell out, here's the expectations. So that, that would come to council. So you are not authorizing her to go and sign a contract? Or are you authorizing the expenditure of the funds tonight? You're just giving us the direction to work on and develop the contract to bring back to you in January, right? And so just to put in perspective, when I was talking about the overall hotel motel tax, if you take a look at our gross receipts and you take the minimum, which it says basically you have to spend at least 15%, if the number can be more, we would have designated about $280,000 for marketing dollars that is part of that fund balance, if you will. So you have the funds, remember y'all were asking the question, what can we ever spend this money on? You have the funds in the fund balance of the hotel motel tax that should be being spent on advertising and marketing. Okay? I got a question. Sure. Brianna had one first.
Mayor, you're welcome to go first.
So, in other words, we can't spend that $280,000 on anything other than something like this? Right. From what I understand, it's supposed to be spent on advertising for the community. And we really don't have anything else at this time? Not for the hotel, right. Okay, thank you, Brianna.
See, there you go, because that was one of my questions. But first of all, Ellie, thank you for being here, and, you know, we've always had a longstanding relationship and partnership with, with the chamber. And we definitely want our businesses to be successful, and, and so I appreciate this. I think my question comes from, so a couple of questions. One is, if you showed the slide, Ashley, the slide with the numbers, the numbers for Dallas and for Fort Worth, what years do those cover?
It was the number, the numbers from Dallas, I'm going to check to make sure I'm 100% right, but my understanding, it was 2019, were those numbers.
Okay, because I, my thought was, just looking at those numbers, was this was pre-pandemic. And so I guess, I, the use of the dollars makes sense, and I definitely think, and there's also been a lot of work on our, on the city part and the chamber for branding. Like that has been worked on a lot pre-pandemic. I guess my question is, from a timing perspective, is this the right time to engage this firm when, just, I feel like, you know, like we just had another restaurant close, right, just the other day? And so, and it continues to happen, and, and there's so many things that are outside of our control, like staffing or shortage in, you know, supply and demand is an issue. And so I want us to be successful, and I guess I question just timing on doing this and investment, considering just where we are in the current situation of post-pandemic, yet still in somewhat of a pandemic, and what your thoughts are on that, or just overall timing?
Thank you. That's a very good question. And my response is, I think this is the absolute best time to implement it. Because again, if we don't do something, it's going to get even worse for our hotels and restaurants. And our goal ultimately is that when people come into DFW or when even they're booking their flights, they'll think of us. But right now, our primary focus is just educating the people in the community on where we are and what we have available. And so, yeah, I think now is the perfect time to do it because, you know, just taking advantage of the people that are already here. Like I said, you've got 8 million people that we can educate.
Right, gotcha. Because one thing you mentioned too, just real quick, as a follow-up, is that, you know, on an airplane, you don't necessarily hear about Capel. We can agree, disagree. A lot of people know Capel for Heartache. And so a lot of our, a lot of our local hotels will send you to Heartache. In fact, they'll shuttle you to Heartache.
Yes.
So how do we expand that exposure so that it's not just Heartache, but hey, we have an arts center, hey, we have this other amenities and businesses, and, you know, please?
Yeah, and the reason that people know Heartache is because Heartache has done such an aggressive job in marketing themselves. And I heard, I put together a hotel, well, excuse me, Hospitality Council back a couple of years ago, and that was the number one thing that the hotels told us out of the ones that came and met with us. They didn't know we had a farmer's market. They knew nothing about the arts center, but they knew Heartache. And that was because of Heartache's efforts, not because of Capel. And I think it's time for Capel to make that effort.
Thank you.
So it's very interesting that we're having this conversation today. Today, a coworker of mine flew in from Boston. He said, "I've never been to Texas before." And we were up in Plano, and it got me to wondering, after this talk, what would we do for him if he decided to come to Capel?
What would we do for him as far as a visitor?
How would we let, what would we tell him to do? How would we get that message to him?
What we currently do, which hopefully this, this marketing plan will enhance it, but what we currently have is the Capel Chamber of Commerce, through our Hospitality Council, has put together a brochure that the hotels now have in their hands, that when people come in, they can hand it to them and say, "These are the things to do." And there's a map of Capel, shows them where these places are. And we also have an online, which we, we put together for the HR directors of the big firms back when they had employees to send, but they can go online and say, "Hey, you know, we're in town. What's there to do?" And hey, click this link, and this will show you everything there is to do in Capel. We do currently have all of that available. But we haven't had the ability to be able to market it.
You send them to our spark to see our lights.
Oh, kayak.
What other question?
Yeah, thank you, Ellie. Appreciate the presentation. And I'm going to go on a follow-up on what Brianna touched upon, but that's part of my concern too. I understand we're, this is the initial stage, and we're trying to go and get the word out. But with every investment you want, kind of a, understand what the rate of return or when that's going to be happening, right? So we're talking about $165,000 probably the baseline, and probably could be more next year or so, right? And I know you're at the early stage, but do we have an idea as to what kind of investment and how long we might get the rate of return that we might be getting, considering, like she said, talked about some of those restaurants and a lot of the places are closing down? And I know you touched upon arts center. Arts center, if you're there for a certain event, that makes sense, but if you're not, it doesn't make sense. Farmer's market, same thing. If you're here on the weekend, you could probably visit, but if you're visiting, you might, you're probably not going to really be buying things from that farmer's, farmer's market offers, right? So I'm just trying to understand what the investment, do we have a, do we have an idea or expectation as to what kind of return we're expecting and how long? And then also, how do we measure that?
In the outline that I gave to you, I don't know if you have it available in front of you, because we have never done this before. We had to talk to other communities that have. And, and so I gave you some metrics on as far as what the return on their investment has been. Addison, the town of Addison, and I have one of their examples in here. And when I spoke with them, they used the same firm that we were going to go with, that we've selected. And they, they, they've used it for several different events, not just the Oktoberfest that I listed in here. And they have always seen, they give a, you see the report. It'll give you the actual metrics from what the results were from that event. Like with this, you know, their Oktoberfest, there was a 55% increase in their media, their digital media, 3.7 million impressions and web clicks. As far as measuring the return, that's really going to be, I mean, the ultimate, how much money is the city getting back? That's going, you're going to see that through your tax income that you get back from the businesses when they, when they have to report those taxes. The, to be able to tell you exactly how much a return we can expect this year, we can't. We've never done it. But, but we do know that if we don't do anything, then the revenue is going to just sit there, and these businesses are going to continue to struggle like they have been. Our goal overall, I'll enhance a little bit more on what you asked about. We want to do this for two years. That's, that's our plan, is to have this in place for two years, and we're outsourcing it to a, a marketing firm. Our ultimate goal is that it would all eventually come in-house as a visitor's center, and it would be regularly funded by that hotel occupancy tax. But that's a couple of years out, and it, all of that is dependent on what these big companies are going to do as far as bringing employees back. We've talked to a number of them, and a lot of them aren't even going to have an answer until 2023.
Just to follow up again, and I understand this is an early stage. So just from looking at what we currently have, right? You mentioned arts center, farmer's market, and, you know, there's some of the businesses, so forth, right? Like Heartache, things like that. But with the kind of aggressive, I guess, advertisement exposure that we're trying to get, do you foresee something that the city needs to do to, I guess, in a sense, to sync with the, maybe if there is an influx of people, how do we accommodate what their needs are? I mean, do we have an idea as to where that, where the city needs to go to make sure that we're not just getting people in and then leaving disappointed that there's not much here to offer? Does that make sense to you?
It does make sense. I feel like I should probably gather more information for you on that. I feel like I should probably gather more information for you on that particular point. But there is a lot here to do. And sadly, even the people that live here don't know everything there is to do here. In our conversations that we've had with the businesses, and the conversations that we've had with residents, there's a lot of them that are not aware of what's here, because the people that live here don't work here. They go down to Dallas, and the people that work here don't live here. And so, they don't shop here or do stuff here. We have a lot of stuff going on in Dallas. You know, there's, there's got a softball tournament coming up, and my understanding is, and a lot of different activities. But there's also very unique restaurants that are here. And, and just making the community aware of that, I think is going to be, I know will be a huge benefit. Like I said, not just the whole, I mean, just the residents here in Capel need to know what's here. Does that make sense for you?
Thanks, Ellie. I think this is a good idea, this whole marketing idea. I remember the days, economic development days for the last decade, talking, having discussions on how do we market at, not to mention you have to have a funding source, which we now have a funding source that we did not previously have. So, I think it is a good approach to start getting Capel's name out there more. Clarification might maybe for you. So, what were you saying about the 15%? We are limited to only spending 15% of the?
Where's Kim? Kim, actually, I tasked her with doing a little bit of research. It's a minimum of 15% to spend on advertising. Is that right?
Yes.
We have to spend at least 15% of that fund.
Okay.
Because what I was running through, so we're projecting, what, a net $180,000 this year for that fund? So, that would cover, what I was trying to figure out is, we're dipping into fund balance. Maybe this is a discussion for later, to how this all, some of the details of this, but...
Yeah, there's no question. When I, I was just looking at what we have budgeted versus what we have committed. So, this goes back to your conversation in July, the fund balance. Well, the fund balance is going to grow even more.
Right.
And so, we haven't spent 15% at least. So, we can go get that. That's what it's for. We can go into it. So, don't, I understand what you're saying, viewing your spending fund balance. But it's, fund balance is supposed to be spent.
Right. I just want to make sure we weren't depleting the whole thing.
For that purpose. And we just haven't done it, you know, in terms of what's going on. And then going forward, that's why I say in July when she comes, or June, because we're going to meet in June.
Right.
And June, when we meet, we'll be able also to lay out more about what next year looks like. Because, A, a couple more hotels will be open, hopefully, right, maybe? They're slow-rolling it, you know, that's for sure. And, you know, we'll have a better idea on the revenue as well.
Okay, I was just trying to think ahead from a sustainability standpoint, from a funding source. More than just spending fund balance, which is fine, but making sure ongoing.
Right. And Ellie and I had that, and that's the reason why she talked about it in terms of two years.
Yeah.
One, to John's point, we need to see what, what the return is.
Right.
And we've got to kind of figure that out, you know, as we go along. And the first, so it's going to take us at least a couple of years to figure that out. And at the same time, working with this firm, so there's some questions as far as detail, as far as details are concerned. There are some questions we don't have an answer to, because that's why we're hiring the firm, to help us, okay, where are the right places to get impressions? And if you recall, and we haven't heard back from them lately, the infamous dart billboards. I had Hannah, you know, just checking on just the value of that, because we have some crazy number, 369 impressions, eight-second impressions per day. Guess who we're going to ask to manage that for us as we, as we go through that? So, so there's, so that may be an expense these folks are thinking of. And we're going to have the benefit of having that agreement with Clear Channel to do that. And that may help, we won't be paying for that, that's part of the arrangement. And that may help keep our costs a little bit down, you know?
Is, Ellie, is it going to be a two-year contract, or do we know yet, or is it just a one-year renewal?
We can do a one-year, but it will be reviewed every quarter. And we have a 60-day notice saying, "Hey, this isn't working." To kind of elaborate a little bit, I spoke with Addison, I spoke with the Visitors Bureau in Allen and Tarrant County. And Tarrant County was probably, of course, a little higher. But the other two cities told me that just on the advertising sideline, they spend about $10,000 a month.
Okay.
And then, so that's, there's your 120 right there. And so, then, the marketing firms, the two top ones both said that it'll take two to three months for them to get that strategy in place. And so, when I come back in July, or, yeah, June, we will have just gotten everything kicked off and started. Because, again, that strategy will include branding and all that fun stuff, and a strategic plan and all that. And, and so, we'll have an idea of what it's going to cost us by the time I come back. And, but I don't know that we'll have a big, huge, hair-pierced result so far. Because, again, it's going to take a couple of months to get that going.
Okay. One other logistical question. So, delays on between the Chamber and the city, is it your, is it City Manager's office, is it Ms. Hurley's?
Min, min.
As soon as there was some liaison, so there will be some, there will be a liaison between the city and this program going on, so ongoing.
Mindy will be included, she and I have already talked, that she will be included in all of the, again, strategic planning and all of that stuff, so that the city has a say in all of that.
Right.
Brianna?
You know, Mark, because he hasn't gone at all.
So, is the city responsible for policing the activities and the strategies of the marketing firm to make sure they conform to that two-pronged approach, you know, the two?
We won't, we'll be, that's part of the contract.
That'll be part of our contract.
The Chamber will have it. And the Chamber, because it requires reporting?
Yeah.
The Chamber will be providing the reports that go through that process.
And then we review the reports to make sure.
Right.
Okay.
And our Marketing Communications Director will be the person that will be the liaison between the marketing firm and us.
And then that firm, of course, has experience in those requirements for the use of the high taxes, right?
The, our marketing person, yes, she?
No, the, the firm.
Oh, yes, the firm does, yeah. Because, again, they've already worked with, like I said, the city of Allison, Addison, and Tarrant County, the Austin CVB. They've worked with all of them already.
My question was for Mike. Mike, from a next-step standpoint, like, are you looking for a thumbs up, thumbs down here? Or is this informational, and then we'll, we'll talk about it later?
No, I am specifically looking for, as we call it, the thumbs up, the thumbs down, because we'll go to work on developing the contract amendment, so that you then will have something to formally vote on in January. That's the hope. Because we have not done any work on that, because we hadn't had this presentation.
Thank you. Okay, so that's helpful, real clarification. But, you know, I will admit, and I mean, I'm, again, I'm very supportive of our businesses. I will, for historical purposes, and I think you touched on this in the very beginning, previous councils, like, did not necessarily focus on Capel being a destination center, right? Where we knew that we would never be a South Lake, right? Because of the way that our residential warehouse area is kind of distributed. And so, but we all, but we also, at the same time, knew that we wanted this to be somewhat of a destination center for people that live here and work here, right? And that's why we have all these different big companies. Things have shifted and changed because of the current economic situation and just the pandemic overall. All that to say is, I, I questioned the timing in the beginning, but I think you're right. It's the right time to do it now from a retention standpoint. And so, I'm sure you'll ask the question, but I'm in favor of it. And I like the fact that we can evaluate it along the way. Not necessarily us, but there's city and Chamber collaboration to help monitor it. And that it's a one-year agreement with the ability to renew. And then there's also a way to get out if we feel like it's not working for our community, so.
Don?
One other question about the contract. So, the Chamber will have the contract with the firm, and we will have a contract with the Chamber. So, will we also, will the city also have a say in the contract between the Chamber and the firm? Or how much control, or how does that, how does that work? Or do we just turn over?
We're turning it over, but Ellie and I have been talking, I mean, in terms of what's going on, but it's a contract.
We won't approve the contract with the firm. That will be handled by y'all.
That's right.
Okay. We will just contract with the Chamber. Okay.
But we, as staff, will have the opportunity to review it.
Okay.
Because eventually, you're going to be getting, you're going to be getting the report.
Because of the fund.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for Ellie or Mike?
Mike, the 15% minimum, 15%, is that, is there a timeframe where we must spend that much?
I'm not aware of a timeframe.
It just says that.
It just says that you're, right. And so, when we get into, and so, I will say this, when we get into the annual routine, we'll be able to look at that, right? Right now, we just have the benefit of the banks built up. And it allows us the flexibility to be able to do this now. And like I said, in June, this will be the first time you're really going to get a chance to kind of see what that budget really starts to look like, beyond just what the arts groups ask for and everything like that. Because it'll be the first time we're actually asking for marketing dollars.
Yeah, Mike, question for you. If my, if my memory is correct, we have $600,000 in that fund balance?
Four, eight years, something.
It's supposed to be 600 by the end of this fiscal year-ish.
It looks like it might be higher, but if I remember.
600 I saw in July.
Are you looking?
So, we're anticipating $970,000.
I knew it was going to be higher.
So, 180 this year, so that adds up right.
$970,000.
900, we haven't spent any money. And you meant, you made a statement that city doesn't have a staff to market our city, correct?
We, yeah, we have never dedicated any staff. I mean, Mindy does a great job working with the Chamber, and working with Hannah, and doing different things. But there's never any, we do not have anyone dedicated to that purpose.
Okay. It's good that we are partnering with the Chamber of Commerce. They have done partnerships. I like that idea. Have we thought about, in addition to the Chamber, talking with any other firms by ourselves who does these kind of things for the other cities?
No. In terms of us contracting directly?
Right.
That's, I understand your question. No. And I'll tell you why. One, somebody's going to have to manage that contract.
Okay. But in this case, we have to manage the contract with the Chamber?
Well, but we already have a contract. I mean, we're already in that relationship. It wouldn't be one more relationship. It would just take advantage of the relationship we already have, leverage it, right? So, I would, I am not coming to you, I would not come to you to present a marketing contract, because this is the vehicle that seems to work.
Okay.
And actually, if I can add, it's more economical for you to do it this way. Because if you hired a staff person or paid a city employee, your costs are going to be much higher. Because you're going to have that salary plus the cost of the advertising itself. So, it's actually more economical right now to do it this way.
And that's what I'll follow up to, because you talked about 10%, which is 12,000 to 15,000, right? And because you're going to be, actually have one staff member dedicated pretty much to this?
It'll be, it'll be our Marketing Communications Director. And she has a background in not only Chamber, but also in Marketing Communications for major firms. So, she knows what she's doing. She will oversee it, and I will be her backup. So, it'll actually be two staff members, but she'll take the lead on it.
10% is fair, but I'm just thinking, like, next year, is that going to be, like, changing substantially, or?
I think as long as we contract it out, it'll probably stay around in that ballpark, depending on what the firm tells us they need. But as far as we are concerned, it should stay around in that same area as long as we're contracting out. And at least as far as what the Chamber is, whatever the 10% is of whatever it is that they're doing. I can't see us asking for more than that right now. But like I said, ultimately, it is our goal that we will eventually have a visitor's center at the Capel Chamber of Commerce, and those are typically funded through HOT. Yes, Mr. Nance?
And to be clear, like, that's, that's, there's a model of that where other visitor convention bureaus, they have an office, maybe in a Chamber of Commerce, they serve that. It's, I wouldn't say, I don't know if customary is the right word, but it's common to see that across the state, correct?
Correct. The funds aren't mingled. They're kept separately, in a completely separate fund. And I've already talked to our CPA about that. Those funds are put into a specific fund just for that particular role. And, but yeah, that is very common, that Chambers will take that on.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Let's just do a quick thumbs up to proceed on. Agreed? All right. Ellie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brianna, Brianna touched on it. We've discussed this for a long time, and just never found the right place, the time, and the people. And I think that, you know, this is a really good match for us to continue that relationship, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Leroy, our incoming chair.
Did you just mean to tell him he had extra jobs this year?
As a volunteer?
Okay, item C is a discussion regarding the Capel Art Center operation. And Ms. Janine is here to talk to us through that one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me tonight. Again, I am Janine Del Chaco, and I am the manager over at the Art Center. And tonight, I am here to ask you for an unfunded, unbudgeted FTE position to be added back into the Art Center's budget, that is funded through the CRDC fund. The position is for a rentals supervisor. This position was in the budget, and it was taken out for '22. And I'm now recommending and asking for it to be included. So, just a quick background of the Art Center. I'm sure all of you may know this, but our mission is to provide a gathering place for those looking to connect and enrich their lives through culture and entertainment. The Art Center is supposed to be a place for memorable experiences that exceed expectations and that are within easy reach. And our staff fulfills this mission with three goals. Our first goal is to support the local art groups. This is our five resident companies that house at the Art Center. These five resident companies, in the '22 season alone, have 82 performances and/or slash art exhibitions that we host for them at the center, and our staff supports them. The second goal for us to fulfill our mission is to raise the quality of life for the citizens in Capel. We do that by having a presented season of shows, that are small touring shows we bring in and contract and concerts at the Capel Art Center. Currently, the '22 season has 17 presented titles and 29 individual performances that our staff does. Our third and final goal is to stimulate business in Capel. How we do that is through our rental program, which is our second stream of revenue. Currently, for the '22 season this year, we have, now this has changed as of this morning, 32 rentals booked or in the contracting process for this year. And we have 29 inquiries sitting in the inbox waiting to be answered. This goal is the goal why I'm here tonight, is to ask for this position, because this is the position that will bring revenue to the city and fulfill some of the 2040 vision plan that you have. These three goals are executed by our Art Center staff. When we are fully staffed without this position I'm asking for, we have 11 staffers. We then have 188 events on the book for this year. And we are open 35 hours a week to the public to enter the building, tour the building, and see our art galleries. We execute it on our own. So, that's why I'm here tonight. Let me explain our two revenue streams to you. We have two ticketing revenue streams. The first one is from our ticket sales. Now, ticket sales pretty much just cover the cost of our artist fees and show expenses for all of the shows that we bring in. The average of cost recovery for a performing arts venue, or of arts venue in general, is a 70% cost recovery. So, that's our goal with our ticket sales. And with having a house of 440 seats, we'd be very careful and very diligent on the shows that we bring in. Because if we bring in a show that is too expensive, we'll never be able to meet those costs from our ticket sales. The second stream of revenue we have is from our event rentals. This revenue stream is This revenue stream is almost a hundred percent profit. I'll have to say about ninety, ninety percent profit, because the fees cover the entire rental, it covers all of the labor for the rental, and then the caterer is Macklin's caterer, our exclusive caterer, and the percentage of the bill that the rental client acquires from Macklin's, we also receive ten percent from that, so that's another income. With these two revenue streams is why I believe this position needs to be reinstated. Currently, the Art Center staff is spread amongst four different F T E full-time employees covering this job, which means every client that requests to have a rental to come into our building has to deal with four different employees to set up their event. By having a designated supervisor, the customer service would be elevated, which would meet the expectations of the city, because you would have one-on-one communication from the entry point of inquiring about your event, filling out the application, and then having a one-on-one meeting and a tour to go over the needs of your event, to create the layout for your event, contract your event, and then fast forward to the actual event. Your rental supervisor and/or the rental coordinator, which we already have on staff, would be on site with them from the point of load-in to the point of strike of their event. A booked eight-hour event is actually about eleven hours for a staffer to work for the entire day, because our job is to have the base of the room set when the client arrives for the event. The second important thing that we want this supervisor to take care of is, right now, there is not a marketing or sales plan created for the rentals department, because it's not within the bandwidth of the staff to do so. By taking advantage of the fact that right now, we're very popular, we're the new shiny object in the city of Capel, and people are calling with inquiries. If we initiate our sales and marketing campaign for our rentals now, we will then continue to keep that interest from future bookings and repeated bookings. Whereas if we wait until things start to slow down, because a new shiny thing has come into the city, it will be harder to initiate our bookings. Having this person with the sales campaign and a better service to our clients will then bring more visitors into the center to book rentals. Currently, the rentals that we have, some are from residents of Capel, but we have a lot of outside of Capel businesses coming in to do rentals. We have had corporate board retreats, we have had dance concerts, we had the Miss South Lake pageant come. This also then speaks to what Ellie was talking about of bringing other visitors into the city. They'll come to the center, but hey, maybe they want to get lunch before or after their event. They will spend their dollars in other businesses. This position can make that happen, and this position would also sit on Ellie's hospitality meetings, so that they could work together. Essentially, that's why I'm here tonight, to ask for this position, and now I would like to hear your questions so that I can answer them.
Kevin?
Let's see here. I want to make sure I get the numbers right. So in twenty twenty-two, Center's already executed contracts of a hundred and forty-three plus thousand dollars?
Yes, since I wrote that memo, it is now up to a hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-six.
Can you make twenty grand appear in my personal? That's not my question, though. So, so obviously, you know, the, the demand is there. In your, and I know I'm kind of asking you to read tea leaves here, but like, in your best estimation, what do you think the max, like, how can we maximize, and what might that number look like of rental revenue? If we were to maximize, you know, as much rental time as possible outside of the events and stuff like that? Like, best-case scenario, because I'll probably also ask worst-case scenario as well, but.
I would have to say, if we really had someone combing over the calendar and really putting the jigsaw puzzle together to really fit in everything that we can to have multiple events going on in all our venues, I feel like this revenue could be doubled. But someone needs to work on that master plan within our team, because right now, I'm currently jigsaw-ing the puzzle together, and I'm looking at our event calendar and I'm seeing we have a show in the Wilson Theater, we have a show in the main hall, and this person wants to come in and do a birthday party in the reception hall in the same night. Okay, and I need to figure out, is that possible? How large is your party? Is your party forty-five people or is your party a hundred people? Because if your party's a hundred people, your buffet needs to go in the lobby, which now means the lobby's being shared between the ticketed shows and the event rental. If it's forty-five people, it all can be contained into the reception hall. Then it just comes down to a labor issue, and if Macklin's can handle the concessions and the event at the same time. So all of that back work, legwork needs to be set up to do that, to actually just confirm and say, yes, that date is available. We can book your party. Now, what would you like? Do you like an extra lighting package? Do you need A V possibilities or bringing in a band? Do you need a dance floor? That's the next stage, and that's how revenue will increase also.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sorry. Can you clarify for me too that the eleven that, that you have, because I think it's five full-time, right? And then I guess it's five part-time?
Oh, here it is. So this is our current organization chart for the Art Center right now. So there's the manager, there's a marketing ticketing supervisor, a ticketing specialist, and then a marketing ticketing coordinator that handles all of the ticketing, box office, marketing, graphics, website, social media handles, everything for the center. Then we have a patron services supervisor and coordinator. They coordinate our entire volunteer Usher program, which is over a hundred people. They coordinate and schedule all of our custodial and security for the building, and they act as the house manager for every single event at the center. We have a rentals coordinator. That person right now assists me in setting up all these rentals. But in the long run, if we had the events supervisor, they would house under them, and the two of them would work together to execute the rentals program and then be the point people on-site for all the rentals to be dealt as days on with the client. We have two production supervisors and two production coordinators. This team executes and advances every single show in the main hall, all the presenting shows, and all of the resident company shows for their technical needs and maintains all of the technical equipment in the building. The coordinators also act as setup crew and tear-down crew for events. So that covers our eleven. Currently, we're only eight. We're working on staffing up.
Gotcha. And I guess for clarification too, you were saying that there was, this F T E position was in the twenty-twenty budget?
Yes.
And then?
Was the old original, or, or chart.
Right, and then it was taken out, and now we're being asked to bring it back in. Okay. First of all, thank you for being here. Thank you for walking us through that and, and for the, the context and the memo and the information. I mean, it was interesting. We went through something similar, again, at a very small scale, so I don't want to, it's not comparing apples to apples, but somewhat of with our senior center, because we knew that we wanted to rent it out, we wanted to use it, and it became something that at first we were like, we're not going to hire someone to do it, and then all of a sudden we were having all these different people that, if somebody wanted to rent it, they were having to talk to three or four different people, right, to coordinate it, and, and then saying like, we need to have that centralized person. But now at a larger scale, if you look at our Art Center and you think about what was just talked about with our Chamber, like, that is a huge focal point for our community, and we want it to be successful, and we want everyone to have a good experience when they come and you set them up, or they rent, or they do something, because you want them to be repeat, you know, repeat customers, right, clients if they come back. And so, you know, I guess that, all that to say is, it sounds to me, correct if I'm wrong, that you guys are, are wearing multiple hats, where you could have this one person help facilitate the coordination of the rentals, so that you kind of have that single point contact versus multiple. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted, I just wanted to think that out loud. Okay.
So we just came off a big wedding a few months ago, and we went through eight months of preparation. And something that Janine said, I didn't understand that we were doing it that way. But whenever we went out to a venue and we met somebody, and then were passed off to somebody else, and then were passed off to somebody else, and then were then told that somebody else was actually going to conduct the event, that was an immediate dismissal. We didn't go back. We wanted somebody to own it. And that was, we didn't learn that at the beginning, and after we'd dealt with several of the facilities, you know, you get that handoff effect, and we'd automatically write them off, or my daughter would. I didn't.
You want to know, you want to know, you want to know who to go to, right? And you want to know that they're going to execute.
Yeah, we wanted to know, you know, who's going to give us the pricing, who's going to give us the capabilities, who's going to promise, who's going to make it happen. And, you know, when you started talking to some of these places, it's like, well, we're, we'll work it out later. No, that didn't, that, that did not meet our expectations. But anyway, I'm sorry. That was personal, but it was very real. Cliff, do you have something?
Yes, yes. I've got a question for Janine. Uh, Janine, uh, tell me, or tell us if you can, uh, give us an outline of the resume that you're looking for, of the kind of person that could fulfill this, because this is obviously a big boy or big girl job. And so they're going to have to have a broad, a broad, you know, a, a broad experience and more than, they can't just be marketers. I mean, these folks have got to be, as, as the mayor's pointing out, light on their feet, and they've got to be multi, they're more, I see them more as leaders rather than managers. In other words, they are, they've got to be creative and they're, you know, a creative person that can think ahead, and this is not working, or let's try this kind of a thing.
Yes, that's exactly correct. We're looking for a detailed person that has actually background industry of event planning and event execution, because along with event rentals and execution, everyone always ends up dabbling in the sales department of that. So when we're talking about their implementing their sales and marketing, they're going to be harnessing their contacts in the industry, whether they are local businesses, whether they're the warehouses, the hotels. They'll harness their contacts, and then they will have an opportunity to work with our marketing and ticketing supervisor to implement the hard marketing skills that they might not have the technical skills for. But it's going to be their background in event planning, event execution, inventorying of all of our equipment for our rentals, and knowing how to space plan and get that event. I want to have a, a executed dinner in three hours, but really, it, it should take five, but the client is, it has to be three. They have to be creative and strategic to make that happen and treat each individual client like they are the only person in the room.
That's correct. As he just pointed out. That's right. They've got, they've got to be always smiling and making everyone feel like they're the number one person in the world when they're there, you know.
Don, did you see?
Yeah, I was looking for some information. I can talk about it quick. So this is, I think it is appropriate that we do this. I mean, with this Capel Art Center, we, we should throw the resources to make this thing successful, and we spend a lot of money on this. It is a quality of life entity that we have in this community. What I was looking for is, we have eleven, not F T Es, but eleven staff. If you probably look at our park system, I'm, I'm assuming we have more than eleven doing our parks, and I assume if you look at the library, you have that many or more. That's what I was looking for, is trying to find what, what are other quality of life amenities in town, how we staff them. So I don't think eleven or twelve sounds like an outrageous number. From a funding standpoint, C R D C is where we get the funding for this. Is that correct? And so it would continue to be funded from that part portion of sales tax. And we would just go into, if it doesn't pay for itself, that's, I guess that'd be worst-case scenario, because ideally, it's going to bring in a, a more rental revenue than anticipated, and it would pay for itself. But if it didn't, it would just come out of the fund balance for C R D C is how we would fund this. Is that, am I thinking about that correctly?
It would come out of the C R D C fund, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, that's all right. I'm, I'm better.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Janine. I'm looking at the memo. Thanks for the detailed memo. So thirty-three Rambles this year. Out of the thirty-three Rambles, we collected thirty-eight thousand dollars.
The thirty-eight thousand dollars was from the twenty-one fiscal year.
Yeah, we are in twenty-one.
No, we're in twenty-two.
Oh, yeah, we just, last month.
So far, okay.
So far in twenty-two, we've collected fifty-five thousand dollars, but we have contracted or in the contract process, meaning the contract's out for final signature, but the proposal has been approved, approved, excuse me. That's where we have the hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars already.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand this F T E and part-time, so eleven staff is supporting the shows that we are bringing into Art Center, correct?
Yes, essentially, that staff, each and every one of the staff members supports the resident company shows, the presented shows that come in, any classes or programs that we put on at the center, like our free make-and-takes once a month, and then the, over the summer, we had the Grove Grooves outside, the free programming. We also, this staff staffs the building for the open building hours, thirty-five hours a week. We do not have any customer service attendance or anything like that. We all take turns sitting in the front desk.
Okay, so I don't know if you have the numbers, maybe Mike or Kim does. Do we have a number, how much revenue we collected from the shows?
So we have an estimated ticket revenue for this twenty-two fiscal year.
No, I'm talking about twenty-one, May to October.
Twenty-one. I know that currently for twenty-two, we have seventy-nine thousand dollars collected in ticket revenue.
Okay. I remember in twenty-one, we didn't have much of any operations.
Correct.
We didn't do a grand opening till September. So I would say it's a pretty small number. Yeah. You can do it. But as far as this year's concerned, yes, she does have, after every show, they do a breakdown. They talk about, here's the expenses, here's what we paid the artist, here's what the revenue that came in, those kind of things. And so I think that's what you were answering just now.
Yes, I actually have the cost recovery for the first three shows that we put on, we presented at the center. The first one was Buddy Holly, and our cost recovery was seventy-three percent on the artist fees and the expenses. The second show was Schoolhouse Rock. That one, we only had a cost recovery of twenty-seven percent. When that was booked, it was booked to be a school trip show, and then COVID hit, and then once we rescheduled, it became a Saturday show in October, and everybody was playing their sports games. So we had a very hard time selling that show. But Potted Potter, which was, did extremely well, and we had a cost recovery of a hundred and three percent. This week, we have a Mary Serp coming in, and we are looking, it's already sold out, so that one is looking to be above a hundred percent also. And that's what I was referring to about the smart choices of the shows that we bring in and the level of those shows at the price we bring them in, because we only have four hundred and forty seats, and we want to make sure our ticket scaling is not scaled too high, because that's what part of our mission is, that everything is easily within reach. So that's the balance that we have to play. And then we have the partnership with the foundation, which we wrote a grant to, and they approved our grant for thirty thousand dollars for our speaker series, because those names are higher price tags. And we work with the foundation with that grant to bring in a community group that's pinpointed and focuses with the speaker's interests. And that grant brings them in for free and has a private meet and greet with the speaker, and then the rest of the money is to help bring the ticket prices lower, so that then the rest of the community can afford to see it, and we don't take too big of a loss on that booking.
So in, in addition to the eleven paid staff, how many volunteers are there helping out in Art Center?
So the, the volunteers are able to be all of our ushers. They are able to be greeters for our programs. So if we have a class, they're able to greet and assist in helping patrons come in. But the volunteers are, they do not work back-of-house. They don't run the shows, and they don't do admin work. They are strictly to be our ushers, our greeters, and our ambassadors for when we have patrons come into the building for an event.
I think you said you have a hundred?
Yes. We have a hundred volunteers that are signed up, registered, and trained, because they all have to go through a training.
Brianna?
Sorry, I didn't know if you.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
I guess, all, all that to say, and I don't know if anybody else has any comments. I mean, I, when we built this Art Center, we want it to be successful, obviously, and I think y'all are doing a phenomenal job. I mean, I'm seeing people, you know, looking for even tickets this weekend, because it's, it's sold out. So we're, we're doing a great job of, of what you're bringing in, and, and even in the midst of, of COVID, found ways to be, you know, creative and successful. And so, you know, I appreciate the fact that you're being thoughtful about what, who you want to bring in and what their role will be. This isn't a, hey, we need five more full-time people. Like, you're, you're leveraging full-time, part-time, and, you know, Like you're, you're leveraging full-time, part-time and, you know, our volunteers are people who, they can come and go, right? They're, they're not people that we can mandate to do certain things and this is not their area of expertise. And so we need people that know what they're doing so that we can be successful. So all that to say is, um, I presume you'll ask a question, but I'm, I'm supportive of the one FTE and, um, and I know that if later down the line we realize that we need to make changes, you know, we can, but what I don't want to do is, like you mentioned, I don't want to wait until we're at a point of no return, um, because we've lost out on opportunities.
Thank you very much. It's, I always enjoy hearing about the operations. I, I, I got it.
Look at Mike.
So I would like, we do need to have a thumbs up or thumbs, or an agreement on giving Mike permission to proceed with the hire or not. I've got one from Brianna. Got Don, Cliff? Okay, that's a majority, so thank you very much. I always enjoy hearing about the operations and, and, you know, this is a completely different model of business for us to be in and it's, it's eye-opening. The time is 6:30. Uh, we do have a boards and, and commissions reception outside, so we're going to recess from work session and join the festivities outside and we'll meet back in the council chambers at 7:30 for a regular session.
We'll reconvene in regular session.
Yes. And then we will reconvene here after the regular session.
Oh, for the rest of work session.
For the rest of the work session. I'll, I'll be hot, it'll be fine. Howdy, everyone. The time's 7:30 PM and we're going to reconvene into a regular session. Thank you very much for being here tonight. This is a very exciting time of year with the holidays coming up and our boards and commissions processed, and this means a lot to the council to have everyone here. Uh, tonight, during our citizens' appearance or public hearings, anyone wishing to speak must sign up and at the appropriate register outside the council chambers and list their, uh, address of residence. Uh, first up is our invocation, uh, which will be given by our honorary chaplain, uh, Don Carroll. And then we'll remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
Let's pray. Father, we come before you tonight and we just thank you for this community that you have created and that you have placed us in. We thank you for, um, the mayor and the city council and the city staff that works tirelessly for this community. We thank you for the citizens that are looking to be engaged, uh, in this community to make this a better place. We ask that you will give us all guidance, uh, that you will, uh, open our eyes to opportunities to better our community, to help each other. Um, we come before you tonight and we just thank you for, uh, the citizens that are being appointed and inducted into the boards and commissions this evening, their willingness to serve this community, uh, to give their insights and their perspectives. Uh, we just thank you that we, uh, live in a community that has that type of, uh, that type of citizenry. Father, we, uh, ask your blessings over this holiday time as we go through the next three or four weeks of time of celebration with family and friends and times of travel. Uh, we just asked, uh, that you will, uh, place a hedge around each of us and protect us during that time. Um, thank you for loving us and always taking care of us. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the heavens, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number seven on our agenda is our citizens' appearance. Uh, we have nobody signed up in advance. Is, was there anyone wishing to say anything tonight? All right, thank you. We'll move on to item number eight, which is a swearing in of our newly appointed boards and commission members. Uh, what we're going to do is, we're going to come, uh, the mayor, Pro Tim, and I are going to come down to the front. We're going to call out each board and commission by, by group. Please, when your name is called, please come forward. We'll swear you in as a group and then I, you may return to your seat. Again, uh, you need to sign the, the documents from our secretary's office, that's Sarah Egan. Um, your term does begin on January 1st, 2022, and, uh, we really appreciate your service to the city of Capel. So again, before we swear everyone in, I wanted to say that the work you do for Capel is invaluable and it makes the city what it is today. This city council could not spend the amount of time that's required to make the decisions, to use your expertise for all of the things that you have to consider doing your job. We rely on your knowledge, your experience and your decision-making to make Capel a great place to live, work and play. We really do appreciate what you do for the city. Okay, first up is the Animal Services Advisory and Appeals Board. Uh, we have two regular members, Jennifer Holmes and Rosalvo Marin, and an alternate member, Sam Gorgon. Could you please come forward? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Art, I'm sorry. All you have to do is say, "I do." We'll make this easy. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully execute the duties of the Animal Services Advisory and Appeals Board of the City of Capel, State of Texas, and will, to the best of your ability, preserve, protect and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state? So help you God. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next is our Board of Adjustment. We have Kyle Rogers, Michelle Anderson, Red Hickey, Kenneth Cole and Dane Salmon. Could you please come forward? She, she just said she feels like she's getting married. Well, you are marrying the city of Capel.
I can have a better partner.
Thank you. Aw. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully execute the duties of the Board of Adjustments of the City of Capel, State of Texas, and will, to the best of your ability, preserve, protect and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations. Next is our Conduct Review Board. We have Jordana Dow, Daniel Frey, Carol Gray, Sophia Guerrero Metz, Anamika Gupta, Ben Nudo, Seth Phillips, Courtney Rogers, Ashish Vieda and Vinky Venkatramani. Could you please come forward? Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully execute the duties and, of the Conduct Review Board of the City of Capel, State of Texas, and will, to the best of your ability, preserve, protect and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
The next one is our Forward Board. Would you please come forward as I call your name? Kimberly Grub, Xiang Hong, Monica Panda and Peggy Quinn. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully execute the duties of the Future Oriented Approach to Residential Development Board of the City of Capel, State of Texas, and will, to the best of your ability, preserve, protect and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state? If so, so help you God and say, "I will." Thank you very much. Our Library Board is next. Um, with Martha Garber, Sakar Katam, Haredis Radish Karishnan, Carly Brenner, Patricia Graziano, Priya Kelly and Araksha Subaru. And I apologize for some of those names. Still, still learning. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully execute the duties of the Library Board of the City of Capel, State of Texas, and will, to the best of your ability, preserve, protect and defend the Constitution of the laws of the United States and of this state? So help you God. Thank you very much. Thank you. Our Parks and Recreation Board is next. Would these people please come forward? Margaret Bryan, Earl Rogers, Mary Arnold, Rhythm Kenawal and Siddharth Shanoi. Would you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully execute the duties of the Park and Recreation Board of the City of Capel, State of Texas, and will, to the best of your ability, preserve, protect and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state? So help you God. Congratulations and thank you very much. Would members of the Planning and Zoning Commission come forward? Sue Blankenship, Ed Haas and Glenn Portman. I got to do this and I apologize. Before you stand, 38 years of experience on the, the Planning and Zoning Commission. We added it up and this is just half the commission. So these guys have been doing a phenomenal job for a very long time and it's the work that they do that makes the city what it is and we appreciate your service. Would you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully execute the duties of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Capel, State of Texas, and will, to the best of your ability, preserve, protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and of this state? So help you God. Thank you very much. And lastly, we have our Smart City Board with Patrick Brant, Ramesh Premakar, Todd Storch, Erin Boganowicz, Kanish Chituri, Allison Hewitt, Deepak Javiant, Narendra Pragadar and Paula Waldron. Please come forward. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully execute the duties of the Smart City Board of the City of Capel, State of Texas, and will, to the best of your ability, preserve, protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and of this state? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations and thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
You know, y'all don't have to leave. Okay, you can go. That's fine. Thank you, guys, so much. We really do need to thank them for all the service and all the time that they're going to spend this coming year, so it's probably appropriate that we call it a short night tonight. All right, let's move on. Item number nine is our Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions have been scrolling through on the screen. Council, do you have any item that you would care to comment on, or question? Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. It's not a question about the item number G with the alley pavement and sidewalks?
Perfect timing. Thank you.
Question is on item G?
Item G, on the annual sidewalk, street, alley pavement repair. The question was, the FNF Construction, is that the company that we've been using for, pretty much generally, for all of the sidewalks, for example?
Yes. Yes, they, so last year, traditionally, we split the contract 60/40, and so we bid it out. The two low bidders will split it. That way, it's kind of easier to manage the workload. So last year, FNF was the low bidder. They had 60% of the contract, and New World had 40%. But we went back to renewal. New World asked for an increase, and FNF held their pricing from last year, from the original bid. So we went back to them, verified that they had the capacity to do the full value of the contract. They assured us they do within the scope of the contract, so we were recommending the full award to FNF in this case.
Okay. Just following up on that part, if we had some, I guess, some of the work that needed to be redone, are we still following up with either the FNF and the other construction company as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to verify that. Thank you.
Councilmember Matthew? Mayor Protim Hinojosa Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually had a quick question, and it might be for you. On item I, if you can just briefly, because when we see City of Paris, just for...
Pardon me?
Oh, who's that? The interlocal agreement was City of Paris. Okay. Sorry. I think, you know what? Well, and I think the reason why I was looking at you, because I was looking at H before that, but I'm fine with it. That's the turn lane on Denton Tap. Thank you. Which I'm very excited about. Hey, Charles.
Hey.
I just had a quick question on item I for our Consent Agenda with regards to the City of Paris. If you can just briefly kind of talk about, you know, whenever you and audiences, City of Paris, they might want to understand what we're doing with them.
Yeah, so back in July, we went out and bid for the third-party ambulance billing services, and so there's been a lot of interest in other communities around Texas, actually. So this is the second city that's wanted to use that agreement since July. So we didn't have a previous agreement with them. They went through their processes, and so this is just us, you know, signing the interlocal agreement.
Collaborating with them?
I'm sorry?
Are we just collaborating with them?
Yes. Yeah, they actually contacted the fire department when they found out, because they don't have to go through the bidding processes that we did. So they want to utilize that agreement.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a follow-up question on item number H. Thank you for sending us the memo earlier, one week early, so we got an opportunity to review them. Just a quick question. This is $261,000. It's a change order, correct?
So this, okay. Yes, yes, it is.
On top of what we approved?
Yes.
And what was that amount?
2.7 million.
2.7. Can you explain to us what is that 261,000 is?
Yes, and the detail in the bid is in the packet, so if anybody wants to, you know, anybody's watching, anyone wants to see all the detail. It is to, if you're familiar with the location, right now, there's a D cell lane that goes into the bank. So we will be removing the, just the very end of that D cell lane, as well as going into that driveway, and then we'll repour and extend that turn lane all the way to Denton Tap. And then there's a lot of signal work associated with that, that change order as well. They're going to be replacing all of the signal conduit, the signal conductors. They've got a pedestrian pole that's in there. So there's a lot of signal work involved that's, I think, is about $90,000 of the change order is actually signal work. But the goal of the change order, in simple terms, is we're just adding the turn lane at the location of the eastbound 121 Frontage Road at Denton Tap, and right now, there isn't one.
Right, so did we miss those work initially, or?
No. Initially, we were working with Tech dot, actually trying to see if they would fund it and build it. And we got to a point where they said, we, all you need to do is permit it and build it, which meant you fund it. So we got to that point, and that's when we brought the amendment to the design agreement to council, so that we could get the design done. At that point, we started working with Tech dot to get the permit through their process, and now we're at a point where we've got the design. We've got the pricing, which the change order is based on the original bid pricing. So we're just now at a point where we can change order it in. But it was really because it is in Tech dot right-of-way. It was something that we, you know, initially, we were asking them, can you build this? We got that answer, and then wanted to change order it into this project.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Neville?
Just a follow-up real fast. So, sorry, I tried to catch you before you sat down. So this is part of the ongoing project that's happening right now to add turn lanes, you know, throughout that Denton Tap corridor, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, excellent. So just a note, I've gotten, I've already seen just so much positive feedback about that, so just like the, a step that wasn't built in because you were trying to get it funded from Tech dot, but it kind of was originally a part of the scope of the project originally, correct?
It was identified as a need. Yes, sir.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I appreciate that clarification.
Council, any other questions? Councilmember Hill?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Items 9A through J.
Second by Councilmember Carol. All in favor?
Long, Heinojosa Smith, Carol, Neville, Jen, Matthew, Hill in favor. None opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. Item number 10. Ms. Tien, would you please read this into the record for us?
I will. Consider approval of a resolution amending Resolution Number 010996.3. As amended, amending the master fee schedule for solid waste collection fees and police fees and authorizing the mayor to sign. So this agenda item, which is, updates the master fee schedule, is brought to you for approval in December of each year. The reason is because the current solid waste contract with Republic provides for a 3% adjustment that is effective on January 1st. The 3% annual adjustment will move the solid waste fee for residents from $17.70 to $18.22. This is a 52-cent increase per month. The senior rate adjustment will move from $15.91 to $16.40. This is a 49-cent increase per month. The commercial rates that are shown in the resolution also reflect a 3% increase. And again, this change is effective January 1st of 2022. The other change to the master fee schedule is the removal of the fingerprinting fee. The service was provided in conjunction with the jail, and since the city no longer operates its own jail, the service was discontinued. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council? I'll entertain a motion, then. Councilmember, yes, Councilmember Carol?
Ms. Tien?
Yes.
This is just out of my own ignorance, but the fingerprinting fee, so how was that wrapped into this fee schedule?
So our master fee, any fee that the city charges needs to be in the master fee schedule.
Got it.
And since we're no longer offering it, we're just cleaning it up.
So it's not related to the?
It's not related.
Got it. It's just the schedule.
Just part of the master fee schedule.
Sorry for the silly question.
No, no, it wasn't silly.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Nevels?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Agenda Item 10.
Do I have a second? Mayor Protim Hinojosa Smith, all in favor? All in favor?
Long, Heinojosa Smith, Carol, Neville, Jen, Matthew, Hill in favor. None opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number 11 is our City Manager Report. Mr. Lian?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, the main thing I want to report this evening is just an update on what's happening with Beltline. South Beltline, I should say, south of southwestern and the East Beltline. The contractor is going to be completing a sewer crossing under Beltline for the Dart Civil Line Project, beginning in January. And the lane closures should start at the latter part of January. As that date gets closer, we'll let you know. I know that Kent and his team have been knocking on doors along the businesses along that area, getting them ready. I believe we've sent out the invitation not to use Beltline to everyone in that particular area. We've already seen that on social media, people are already looking for alternative ways to get around not using South Beltline. The current plan, as you well know, is to keep six lanes open from a point approximately 600 feet north of LBJ to the southmost of the project. This approach will help maintain the capacity at the southern limit. So what you're talking about there is the 635 Bridge, so that they're not all trying to squeeze in that 635 Bridge into the three lanes. So I would say that's the most significant project that we are spending a lot of time and effort on as we go forward. That's it.
Thank you very much. Item number 12 is the Mayor and Council Reports. The City of Capell Administrative Offices will be closed in observance of Christmas and New Year's holidays on Friday, December 24th, Monday, December 27th, and Friday, December 31st. I would like to give a thanks to Councilmembers Matthew and Nevels for staffing the fill-the-kettle over on Saturday. We received a challenge from the Mayor of Lewisville to outdo their council, and unfortunately, it was a relatively late request, and we had a, it was difficult to put that in our schedule. This does support the Salvation Army in Lewisville, which does service Capell. We also have set up a website that people may donate to, and you may promote, the promotion of the website. Ms. Owens has the website that you can use to send out communications to your friends and neighbors, and really appreciate you two for doing this. So thank you very much. Item number 13 is the Council Committee Reports concerning items of community involvement. No council action or deliberation is permitted. Item A is a report on the North Central Texas Council of Governments by Mayor Protim Hinojosa Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, for Items A and B, I'll just say that I have nothing to report. The first meeting for North Central Texas Council of Governments, in my new liaison role, will be in January, January 27th, and for North Texas Commission, it will be on February 17th. So I will have more to report in 2022.
Thank you. We'll skip on over. Since she took care of A and B, we'll skip on over to C, which is a report on the Historical Society with Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize, I was working on some of the things that I don't want to say that I had forgotten about as far as it relates to the Capell Historical Society. So I wanted to get a complete report done. The, they began, the society began re, or meeting on a regular basis after extensive period of time not meeting as a result of the COVID and other things, and they began in October. They elected new officers at that meeting, and Pete Wilson has stepped down as the president. He's been the president for the last two or three years, and thought that he couldn't continue with the job, or wanted someone else to help out. So they, the society has new officers. And the Wilson House, by the way, is nearly completed as far as the carpenter work, the renovations, and the purchase of items that relate to the 50s, 60s era in there. I wish I hadn't thrown away a lot of the stuff that I grew up with, and I could have helped them out. The society participated in the Christmas event down in Old Town back at the 1st of December. One of the members agreed to be Santa Claus. It was a big hit. His wife came, is Ms. Claus, and they had 165 visitors to the Menyard Store to visit with Santa Claus. They also sold goods down there. They are planning, the society is planning in the month of February to begin opening the Menyard Store on a regular basis for tours, as well as they are soliciting citizens to make products that they can sell in the stores. So hopefully, they can raise, you know, $10 or $15 a Saturday. So we'll see, we'll see what happens. They haven't put a budget together, but I'm sure it'll be thousands and thousands of dollars. And so that's, that is my report, since I haven't had an opportunity to make one in quite some time, on the Capell Historical Society.
Thank you very much. Next is a report from the Capell Seniors with Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. The Capell Senior Center is up and running, and they've been having a lot of activities. They just recently had holiday lunch on Wednesday, December 1st, where over 100 members attended, and they enjoyed a sing, loved sing-along song, and photo booth with Santa, gift bags, and a hearty meal. They also had art acrylic class on Thursday, December 2nd, and the Financial Friday on December 10th. The, for your information, for the spring program guide, it has, is released, and the registration started on Monday, 6th, and you could always go to Capell Senior Center website to view that guide as well. They will also have Lunch and Learn, Lunch and Learn on Life Insurance on Wednesday, December 15th, from 11:30 a.m., and on December 20th, they will be hosting a hybrid cranium cardio class at 1 p.m., if you want to get your cranium, yeah, cardio done. And also, on December 20th, the youth volunteers will be attending for Holiday Sound at 2 p.m. And to close out the month, the Munch and Learn will be held on December 22nd, where we'll be updating about the city news and the, some of the education on scams and fraud. So one other thing that I do want to mention is that the seniors are really willing and want to get together and meet, be able to, you know, get back to the old schedule of being, meeting people. And what they really would like to see also is that... And what they really would like to see also is that during these events, they'd like to see a lot of other people visit them as well. And I've also offered them that all the council members will be coming by one at a time to visit them, just to meet and greet them as well. So if you have an opportunity, that would be great to see you there as well. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember John, did you have a chance to sing along with them?
Wasn't good enough.
Thank you. All right, item number 14 is public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation allowed. Do we have any PSAs? Seeing none. Item number 15, there was no necessary action from the executive session. We were unable to finish our work session earlier today, so we are going to recess from the regular session and reconvene in the first-floor conference room to complete our work session. The public is, of course, welcome to join us. Thank you. The time is 8:04.
She's gonna give you a hard, hey Cliff, Cliff, she's, she's gonna give you a hard time. Four.
All right, the time is 8:07, and we're going to reconvene into work session. We have three items, I believe, left. What's that? Three. The first one is a discussion, or actually, just a discussion on the council winter retreat. Just as a reminder, that's scheduled for Friday, January 21st. I believe the times on that one are going to be 6 to 9 p.m., and then reconvene in the next morning, Saturday, the 22nd, from somewhere around 8 to noon. We've got Randy Pennington is going to be moderating this for us. Randy has been involved with some city business in the past. He did part of the Vision 2030, not orientation, one of the public councils. And also did a couple of council retreats that some of you may remember him from. Just to give you an idea of what we're planning to talk about is, the big island is the 2040 Plan. We'll review what was done this past year on it. We will talk about the SMART board and the Ford boards. If you think about it, we tasked them with doing stuff, and they've come back with a couple of presentations and a couple of discussions, and we need to discuss and decide how we want to move forward with their recommendations. So it's, it's just, you know, we, we receive your input, and we need to decide how we're going to act on that. And then the next, the big item for the city staff is, you're going to be given a, a matrix, and it's a scoring sheet that allows you to rank all of the items that the staff has on the work plan for this next year, which is year 22, 23. We'll score them 1, 4, and 7. And actually, Tracy will be sending out emails on that. It's, it's a pretty simple thing. The scoring is 1, is we like to slow down whatever that activity is, 4 is keep going at the same rate, and 7 is accelerate the activity. So it's just a way that we come to a consensus by, it's actually very, through taking everybody's input and tabulating the results.
Mayor, just for clarification, it's not, we haven't developed any work plan? That's the pillars. So it's the pillars in 2040.
We developed, we developed the work plan.
Right, you develop, this is your... He's looking at me.
From your work?
We developed the work plan. Never.
So, so this tells them what we want done, and then they go do it? How's that?
It starts that process.
Okay. Well, that, that's item number one. Item number two, we'll be going over the budget, the upcoming budget. We'll do a first quarter review. We'll hear the five-year forecast. We'll go through our debt model. We can talk about homestead exemption at that point. We can talk about our tax rate at that point, and then we'll, we can discuss the overall budget. Just as a reminder, if you have a strong burning desire for an item, this is the time to talk about it. This is before the budget for the next year is put together. And if we need to set a no new tax rate as our rate, this is the time to let the city staff work it in. Yes, Don?
I was going to just sort of put, put a plug in for Kim. Kim is working a little bit, just in general, sort of trying to understand how the budget works, more in depth than what you get in the budget workshops, you know? It's sort of how, how it's set up and what went into some of it. And so I'm going to volunteer her to, if anyone else thinks that that might be of note, it's, it's very good. She, she's able to walk through and sort of just lay out sort of how we got here, and sort of what the plan has been from the past, and breaking down some of the nuance to the budget that you don't get otherwise. So I told her I would try my best to remember it all, but I wouldn't promise. But, but I think it was very, very beneficial, so I think, I appreciate her doing that.
And I would love to do it with any of you, sit down with me if you do.
So, you know, she, she will also talk about our...
Waterbeater.
What's that?
Waterbeater.
She didn't, we didn't talk about waterbeater.
No, it's our, it's our debt service on...
I know, just kidding.
And then, anyway.
Thank you, Kim.
She, it will be very entertaining, I'm sure. We'll also talk about our crime control district. This is, I, I'm sorry, aside, the state requires that we reallocate this one, is it, this is the one that's ever four years?
Crime control is 10, street is 4.
So this is the 10-year cycle. It's, it's the 10th year of the crime control district, and we actually have to take it to the voters or by state law to get it reallocated. So the, the question is, do we want to take it to the voters or not? And then they'll decide whether the crime control district is approved. We may have some time, depending on our agenda, to talk about the ARPA funding, that's the American Rescue Plan. We've received some funding from that quite a bit, and we'll get more next year. And we can talk about how, what we'd like to do to spend that. And then, anything is, then if you've got an item that you would like to have discussed, please let us know, Mike or myself, before, as soon as possible, really. It's going to be a pretty full agenda, to be honest with you, but we'll be happy to add anything in or modify or alter. Yes, sir.
Send it in via email?
Yeah, that'd be fine. So Randy Pennington is, is asking that you interview with him, not interview, that's a bad word, talk to him. He's got three questions he wants you to answer, and Mike's going to pass those out. This gives him an idea of where our thought processes are, and where our mindset is. Yes, well, yours is. And so, you know, this is the winter retreat that begins the real budget session for next year. And so this is our, it's not a, it's the kickoff of the, well, I'm sure there's some budget planning that's already begun, but this is our first foray into it, and we'll continue to have meetings on the budget, you know, literally throughout the year. But this is the first big one. Any questions, comments, thoughts? Kevin?
Who do you need this return to?
This is for you to talk to him in person about.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if we needed to submit it to him.
I was just kidding, it's not really great.
Well, I thought only his was, that's what I meant, so.
It's just a problem.
Just to be, just to be prepared to have that conversation with him.
Got it, okay. I mean, some of his questions, you can take it at a very high level, or they're, you know, they can be pretty meaty. All right, anybody have any questions about the winter retreat? All right, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is E, that's discussion on the American Rescue Plan, and Tracy is going to be doing that one.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Council, I will make this short this evening. My purpose tonight is to provide a preview of a prioritization matrix that will be sent to you all later this week, is my hope. And so if you'll rewind back to September, when we did have a briefing with the council related to some of the eligible uses, we had just received our first payment. So we will be allocated a total of 10.2. We had just received the first payment of the $5.2 million. We had very preliminary rules in terms of the guidelines that we have received from the federal government around what would be eligible uses for those dollars. And so at this point, we have kind of continued, we did receive some feedback from council in terms of philosophy about the types of things that we would like to include as consideration for projects for those funds. And so we will, the list that you'll see and the prioritization exercise that we will be asking you to work through will be very similar to what the mayor just walked through for Vision 2040 on the pillars. So it'll be on a scale of 1, 4, and 7. So 1 is, you know, I have very, that's a low priority for me. 4 would be, I think it's got some merit, but maybe there's some other things I'd like to see in front of that, and 7 is high priority. Staff has been working through continuing our due diligence conversations around eligibility. The window for submission for entities to submit questions or for clarity around the rules, that's closed, so we, we take that as a good sign that there will be some sort of final ruling issued. And so the, the listing of projects that you'll see in the spreadsheet, it will include four different categories. So the first will be the social services, so that's anything like the woven clinic, the Metro Crest Services items that we talked about previously. There'll be a category for business assistance. There'll be a category for new capital projects, so things that are currently not included in our fiscal year 22 budget. And then there are things that are in our fiscal year 22 budget that are eligible expenditures that we could apply ARPA money to. We will also have, I lied, there's actually going to be four, five categories, because there'll be an other. And so if there are other ideas that are not reflected in the list, that's where we would like council to fill that in as well, so that we can then kind of consolidate all of those ideas. We would like to have this information back from you all, January 4th, in anticipation of having a follow-up conversation around the results and the priorities at the January 11th council meeting, so that first meeting in January. We recognize there's a holiday between now and then, but we do hope that there's enough time to kind of give, give the spreadsheet some thought. So at this point, I'll pause. If you have any questions, I know you don't have the spreadsheet in front of you, but it will, I'll send it out. It'll be Excel, very similar to what you have received in the past for 2040, and it'll be just 1, 4, 7 for each one of those projects that are listed there.
What are the categories that ARPA fund can be, can be applied to?
Yeah, so we have the, the category for your water and sewer improvements. We have the category, the broad category of revenue loss, which is where a lot of the projects we're proposing are going to kind of fall under that umbrella. And the third one escapes me. Infrastructure, broadband, and that's where they...
Okay. John?
The, thank you, man. The eligible uses, right? Is that going to look, consist of all the things that, that's eligible uses? Or is that just confined, constrained to what the city decide, or what the staff decided that we want to use those funds for? You, you, you understand what I'm saying?
So are you asking if the list you're going to see is inclusive of all of the types of eligible uses, or if it's just uses that, at the staff level, we have created?
Right, so I'm just wondering if, does it consist of full list of what is eligible uses that we could choose from, or is it just, you know, reduce?
Yeah, so I will say there are, there are projects that are representative of almost all of those categories that you will see in this, this spreadsheet. So there are some things that just don't fit for us, for example, like the broadband. There are some income requirements there that our community's just not going to hit. And so for categories where we do have eligibility and we do have projects that would fit, we've got something that fits almost all of those. Again, those are just the broad umbrellas, right? So there's several different things under each one of those, but we've got stuff that does apply under each one of those broad umbrellas.
It sounds so easy when somebody just gives away money and then...
It's...
So out of the $10 million, how much money did we receive so far?
5.1.
5.1.
Yes.
I know we approved for the staff salary increase the last time.
Yes.
Some money from there.
Yes.
What about hiring somebody? Can we do that out of that fund for any purpose?
For some very specific purposes, yes, you can hire staff. Now, there are thresholds that you can't exceed the staffing numbers from, I want to say it was March of 2020, but yes, staff is an eligible expenditure for, if it meets those eligibility criteria for the different things.
Anybody else? We look forward to seeing your...
Yes, just a, just a preview of what is to come.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Fourth of Jan.
We have to give them back?
Yeah.
This week.
Maybe. All right, item F is discussion regarding the mayor and city council attendance policy. Bijou?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to explain the context why I asked to add this item. Last month, in November, we only met once. So we had a discussion about board members missing meetings, and we had to discuss what was the circumstances each member missed, and I even voted to approve a person who missed three meetings. So I, soon after that meeting, that is the context, I asked Ashley, what happens if a council member misses two meetings? What happened? What, what does the city do? The reason I asked was when I was in park board in 2014, I got a letter from the city saying, hey, you missed two meetings in this year, if you miss one more, you're out. So that was the context that I was asking Ashley, a simple question, what a council member misses two meetings, do we send a letter to the council member through email or writing? If you miss three consecutive meetings, you're out. That is the context that I asked her a question, and I asked her to do a presentation to the entire council. So do we do anything like that, Ashley, if a council member misses or a mayor misses two meetings? We don't?
So let me, let me take this one. So the, the section in, in our charter is actually very brief. I don't know if you've read it, but it's like one sentence. And it basically places the entire responsibility of determining the forfeiture of office to the council itself. So to your question, does, who decides? Well, the council does. And it even goes so far as... And it even goes so far as to saying that we have, not we, you have the latitude to determine whether an absence is excused or not. The language in the, in the charter says something to the effect that if a council member misses two or more meetings due to an unexcused absence, or I'm sorry, if he misses three meetings in a row and they're unexcused, then the council shall determine the, the impact. And it gives you the latitude to remove the, the council member from office. But it's completely up to the, to the council to decide. I talked extensively to our, to Bob Hager about it. And he explained that this was set up to be not a, it wasn't set up to be a negative, a negative thing, a punitive thing. But it was set up to protect the council from itself in case three members decided to boycott a meeting, which you could. And then the city would have no legislative body in, in action. So if three members decided to boycott the city council for three meetings in a row, their other members could remove them from office.
So what, if I'm reading right, number four is they fails to attend three consecutive regular city council meetings without being excused by the city council, they are out.
No, just not say that, read the next sentence.
Well, the city council shall be final judge.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, maybe that's where we need to clarify. So what we do in the event a person misses third meeting, they can come for the fourth meeting?
If you don't, if you don't vote to dismiss them, yes.
But the, you can only add that item on the fourth meeting?
That's correct.
So that person is still going to be present?
Actually, what I worked out with Ashley is if a council member misses two meetings in a row, she's going to call me the next day and let me know. I'm already going to know it. And at that point, I'll call the council member, go over this rule, and tell them that they can request an excused absence from the council if they so desire.
Okay, so there is a process in place. If two, if two meetings are missed, the city secretary will inform the mayor.
Mayor.
Okay, that, that I didn't know.
And, and it's because it's not written down, but that's what we're going to do. Now, in the case of Brianna, I already knew she was gone. And I knew that her second meeting was a, a business trip. In my mind, that would be an excused absence, so I didn't, I mean, I didn't worry about telling, well, in fact, she told me she was going to be here tonight, so I didn't concern myself with it. If we hadn't, if she had missed tonight, then our steps would have been, A, to consider whether you were going to give her an excused absence for her business trip. And that would be your, your discretionary call. And then if you decided not to give her a discretionary, or a excused absence, you'd have to vote to remove her, to have her forfeit her office.
So then you need to add an agenda item for the third meeting?
Well, for the, for the next meeting. We probably, I, my press, my personal opinion is that I would call a special call meeting for that one budget, or that one item. I wouldn't want to do it in a regular city council meeting.
And that's why what we recommend.
What's that?
That is probably what we would recommend as well.
Oh, thank you. So, you know, that would be one item, we'd discuss that, and that'd be, that would be the, the resolution of it.
Okay.
John?
I saw you, well, I'm sorry.
From the bylaw standpoint, there isn't an issue unless a council member misses three consecutive.
That's correct.
There's nothing written with two.
That's correct.
Okay. And then just so you know too, that in the past, when people have missed, because I, I asked for everybody's record attendance. Mike, because Mike has done this with me when I worked for Microsoft and I commuted to Seattle, Mike was always really good about saying, hey, just so you know, right? Like if he knew I was gone, I always told the mayor, I told the city manager, he would say, that's your second, if you miss a third consecutive, you know, just FYI, just be careful about that. So it has to be consecutive. It doesn't, it's not three total, it's three consecutive meetings. So I could miss next week, I could miss my next council meeting, and that's, it's, we're, we're starting to tally over.
Okay, so that's a good one. Do we have any count, how many council members missed two, then came back three, third meeting, then missed again, anything like that? Do we have for the last five years?
No, not for the last five years. I recently compiled the list from the last three years, so I can provide that to council.
I know I missed two meetings in a row in 2014. And the city manager, I think, told me, hesitantly. Well, my view is it's better coming from the mayor. You're elected by the city, the citizens of Capel to serve. It's not, you're not elected by this group. And it's the citizens that are going to determine whether you're eligible to remain in office. And if they think that your attendance is not worthy of it, after repeated, repeated absences, that's their call, it's not really this group.
Well.
John?
Mayor, thank you. But I just wanted to clarify, I understand you had to talk with Bob. But if we read this, it does say that a forfeiture is a member of the city council shall forfeit, shall forfeit his or her office if such person. Now, it talks about a violation, and it says fails to attend three consecutive regular meetings, which, whether that missing is excused or not, is actually determined by the council, right? So in other word, there's a step missing that, because if we don't know, or if we're never asked whether that is asked, if, if that's excused or not, then how do you ever decide whether that is excused or not according to what the charter says?
Well, that's part of the communication I'd have with the, the member that misses. I would ask them if they want to bring an agenda item to the next council meeting to ask them, to ask the council to excuse an absence.
Okay, so all I'm saying is, I'm, again, I'm, you know, I'm just going by what this says, right? It says that, from what I'm understanding is, is that the council decides whether something is excused or not.
That's right.
Right?
That's correct.
But if we're not brought upon about something, how do we even ever determine whether it's excused or not?
Well, I will tell you that there are a number of cities in the area that routinely place council members' absences on the consent agenda to ask for an excused absence. That's a, that's a standard process for them.
Okay, but all, all I'm saying, so I, I haven't seen it, so am I, or? I haven't seen, we haven't seen it, right?
We've never, we've never gotten there.
We don't, we don't do that. So he should say other cities, I think he asked other cities, right? Is that what you're referring to?
Well, actually, yes. Farmers Branch is one.
Right. So, so all that to say, we don't, we don't have anything in place.
We don't.
All we have is our bylaws.
We don't have anything in place right now. We've never had a case where a council member missed three in a row.
Well, even if it's not three in a row, I'm just saying that it is each accident, it, what I'm, what I'm seeing is that it has to be decided whether it's excused or not.
That's correct.
But my recollection, there's never been a, hey, is this excused or not? Or is that, I mean, again, I, I don't know if I'm.
Just real quick, there, there's never been, in the time that I have served, right? And again, I had a, a time I wasn't here, but from 2005, there's never been a time that there has been a conversation of excuse or unexcuse. There's, there's always been conversations, like if people are gone, there's been people reaching out and saying, hey, I just want to make sure you're okay, if something happened, whatever it may be. There's, there's conversations amongst council members, right? If, if for some reason there's a concern, it's been taken to the mayor or the city manager, whatever it may be. Correct me if I'm wrong, because you did provide me some information. There have been council members that have missed more than three in a row. And that, none of us, none of them are sitting around this table. And, and I believe that was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but I think it was due to a death in the family. And I could be wrong. And so, and not you, I was just saying, Nancy. And so, all that to say is that there has never been in the time I've been on council, a, a question of excuse or unexcuse, if, if there's ever been any conversation. Most people were like, hey, we just, we had to work. And there was just an understanding around people around the table that this is, we have a paid job, and then we have a volunteer job, and sometimes we have to miss.
Sure, no, completely understand that you have to miss or whatever. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, according to the charter, and if there is a miss, it seems like we're supposed to determine whether that's an excuse or not excuse. And if there are three unexcused absences, then it's, they shall forfeit, right? So I'm saying, there's, it seems like we're missing something, even though the charter is there saying that we're supposed to determine whether that's an excused absence or not, but it was never brought up. If so, if whatever, that, that's, that's my point, I'm just saying.
Right, right.
The discussion would probably occur after the fact. So after you get that third one.
No, not, not after the third, it looks like everyone, every excuse has to be determined whether it's an excuse, uh, absence has to be determined whether it's excused or not. That's how you tally up whether it's excused absence or unexcused three absences, right? Because if you don't know whether that's excused or not, how, how are you going to tally up three unexcused absences?
Right, so if it's, if it's not already predetermined whether it's an unexcused or excused absence, then it would go to city council to determine whether or not those are excused or unexcused. And if it's determined that the three are unexcused, then the question would be, do they forfeit their office?
So when you say predetermined, predetermined by who?
By, by council or?
So that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, we're missing that point where we never were, I never got notified about something and said, hey, is that excuse or not? Nothing like that, right?
Right, right, no. And maybe, move on, I'm sorry.
I'm going to try, I'm going to try, because I think I understand what you're saying. We're going to use ex-council member.
Right.
They, they miss a meeting.
Right.
At the next meeting, there, you're saying the step, the way that you're interpreting the charter is, to your point, let's say it's on the consent agenda, there's a consent agenda item that recognizes whether or not it's going to be an excused or unexcused item. I think that's what you're saying.
That is correct, because.
So it's not something into Brianna's point, into the mayor's point, is not something historically this council has ever done. So you're introducing a new idea.
Well, when I say new idea, I'm just looking at what the charter.
But, but I'm not, I'm just saying, the, I had to understand your question.
So yeah, it's not even, I'm just saying that if the council's job is, if, if it's left up to council to determine whether an absence is excused or not, and that determines whether that absent, those absence are three consecutive or not, then there's got to, there's a procedure that we haven't been following then, right? Because that's never happened.
But there is, that's what, that's what's lacking from this is, is a procedure. So, I mean, what I recommend is to start following.
Right, because.
And have a procedure where you have, you know, you either, for example, if a council member has a work trip, and they can, and it's up to you to determine what that procedure is.
Right.
If, if you can have it predetermined prior to that absence, council, council make a determination that that was, you know, this council member is going to be out of town for accident or such, such work event. You can excuse it then, or in a situation where, you know, the, for some reason, it doesn't get brought up beforehand, it gets put on the agenda, just like in Farmers Branch, after the fact, on the next meeting.
So I'm just saying there's, there was, there isn't a, it, the guideline, or the ordinance is there, but I, I'm saying there's just not, hasn't been a process or procedure that we've done.
We've never routine, we've never taken action on an individual absence. We've taken, we have considered action if we have two absences in a row.
But, but you don't know whether that's excused or unexcused? Because the council never determined whether that's, because if it's excused, then it doesn't even matter.
And you're right, you're absolutely right. I mean, we should do it, or, if, if there's any thought that you're going to miss three in a row, yes, you should do it every time.
Or, or if there was an automatic guideline and say, hey, if you're missing for work or your traveling, whatever, that's excused. Then, okay, that's already set in stone, right?
Actually, actually, by the charter, the way I read it, it's still got to be determined by the council.
What I'm saying is, if we had that, if we had put that in, if that was in place, right? Then we could say, okay, work, whatever, that was, that was in there as well, that we could consider as excused, without having to vote on it or determine whether the absence is, you know, excused or not. But just by going by this thing, it says that we're supposed to determine whether excuses, I mean, absence is excused or not, to determine whether there's going to be three consecutive unexcused absences.
But it doesn't say when you have to do that. I mean, you can do it all after the fact, I mean, up, up to the third absence. It, it's all moved.
Yeah, doesn't, yeah.
Point is moved. Okay, hang on. Bijou, you got a quick. The conversation doesn't even have to.
First off, did I hear that correctly, that a council member missed three consecutive meetings due to a death in the family?
I believe, I could be wrong, I was just, I, I may have misspoken, I'm just saying maybe they missed two. I don't, I don't know what it was. I, I don't know that, I think you mentioned it correctly. I don't think we've had three in a row by anybody in the time that I've, I've been on council.
I'm not aware of three.
I'm not either, so I think I met two. I know I've missed two.
I wasn't keeping track.
Yeah, I was.
Okay, so I, so that is correct. So did, we did not have anybody miss three meetings, okay. Okay, so my next question is for you, you mentioned we are missing a procedure. So as a city council, do we need to discuss or, or edit or modify the charter to include that procedure?
It doesn't need, it doesn't have to go in the charter.
Okay, where does it need to go?
Matter of fact, it's better if it doesn't go in the charter, because it gives you the latitude.
It's easier to make changes to it, but, and you can, you can have, you can have guidelines, you can have, I mean, yes.
So it's a separate document attached to the charter saying that we, what do we do? How do we, how do we do that?
It, I mean, it's just a procedure that, that you would adopt as a city council, it's not, it's not going to go in the charter.
It wouldn't necessarily be an ordinance either. It, it's kind of a policy and guideline. This is how we're going to do business, and we educate the council, and this is what, these are what the expectations are.
That's just like the code.
Up until now, you haven't had it. Up until now, it hasn't been an issue. Up until now, it hasn't been something that anybody's really brought, raised its head. And so it, so it's just something that y'all, if this is important and you want to deal with it, just say, I'm going to, if you want us to go work up a proposed procedure, we'll put something together and we can put it on as a resolution for the council, but that's, that's in y'all's court. I mean, we're, we're not going to impose something on the council from a staff perspective.
To me, we are accountable to the people who elected us, so we got to show up on meetings on time. And if this is not clear, we need to adopt some procedure, we should do that, we discuss about this kind of things. I, I know it's a sensitive matter, we are discussing about holding us accountable, holding us to a higher standard. But I think if we, I think we need to have clarity and a procedure in place.
Brianna?
Okay, I'll go next, I guess. I guess I was trying to understand what we were trying to accomplish. We're all adults, and, and we all know why we were elected for council. You talk about showing up on time, but that's not even what we're talking about here, it's about absences. And, and then the question is, where do we draw the line between regular meetings and work sessions? And, you know, extra meetings, and none of that is in there, right? And it's only council meetings, and so.
And it's very specific, it's only the regular session.
Agreed, well, exactly, it's not even work session. It's only work, regular session. And then the other thing is that, you know, when I think about being a council member, there are so many factors that go into being a good council member. And in fact, a council member and, and why we are elected to be in this position, and why many of us have been reelected, you know, to, to continue to serve. And so I guess I would love to understand what we are trying to accomplish at this time when it has not been a problem. And so I'll leave it at that, and Dawn, you had something to say.
Reverend, what is it?
That's a reverend.
Well, I was going, you actually stole some of my thunder, Brianna.
I'm sorry.
No, I was, you know, I'm probably a little bit unclear exactly what's being accomplished. Because I look at this list, and I like the way you phrased it about it, to protect the council from itself or whatever. Because if you look at one through three, I would say those are relatively serious things. Like they're either not qualified, or they violate a prohibition, or they've been convicted of a crime, a moral turpitude. And these are like, it's a serious thing. And then, in fact, if we were to remove, or I say the charter was to remove someone from council, I feel like that would be a weighty topic to remove an elected official without a lot of discussion beforehand, or, you know, leading up to that. So to, to that point, I guess I would probably be in favor of not getting too honed in on, you know, I don't come in on number two, I don't come in and wrap in warranty every time that I did not violate an express prohibition of the charter this week, you know? So, you know, going, it's, it's in there to protect us if something arises, if a problem arises. You know, so, you know, going, it's, it's in there to protect us if something arises, if a problem arises. But I don't know that it's an ongoing issue that we have to overly be concerned about, it would be my initial thought. And furthermore, your point is well taken about, I mean, it's talking about regular city council meetings, but I, you know, certainly, you know, does that mean you can miss all the work sessions and never come to any work sessions and be okay? Well, that's, doesn't make a very effective council member either. So, you know, from its, you know, if it's just a check in the box of being here for regular council meetings, I, you know. But, but I understand you're not trying to paralyze the council from.
Can I throw another one at you?
What?
It doesn't say anything about showing up for the council meeting and leaving early.
Hmm.
Oh, there you go.
Getting counted, or, yeah. Well, that's, that's why I don't wanna, my view would be not to get too honed in on just checking the box of the absences, or getting caught up in a big procedure if we don't need one.
I tell you what, I, I spent a lot of time on this, and there's not a perfect answer. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's hard, uh.
All I'm, all I was talking about was just, when I looked at this, it seemed like there's a procedure that we're supposed to follow that, that, you know.
Can I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
Or just another way to look at this.
Tell everybody who you are.
I'm sorry?
Tell everybody who you are.
I'm Bob. You know, it, to not make this overly complicated, you can just have kind of a presumption that if somebody misses a council meeting, it's an unexcused absence. And then, if that person wants to have that be an excused absence, that person can ask for it to go on the agenda.
And, and that's.
And that way, you're not, you're not making decisions constantly about all these absences. It's just, it's an unexcused absence unless the council member takes action either prior to the meeting or after the meeting to have it put on the agenda.
And that's what I wrote down here, I have the council member may request that their absence be considered as unexcused by the council at the next council meeting.
Because if you're not gonna miss.
If it's, if it's that way, then, sorry, that's.
For clarification.
So it's automatically unexcused unless you request.
Request otherwise.
But for clarification.
Well, I mean, yeah, okay.
That, that's the implied presumption that you're unexcused.
But for clarification, so if you miss two, right, and you don't have it on the agenda, it's presumed, they're, both of them are presumed unexcused. However, it's not an issue until you have three.
Exactly.
Right, okay.
That's correct.
So, we don't have to constantly be putting things on the agenda to be voting on for the sake of voting on and letting in, and, and saying, okay, we were out for work, or we were out because we had death in the family, or we were out because.
Yeah, and, and part of this is that if you have two absences, I will ask you, do you want to ask for one of these to be considered as unexcused?
Excused, yeah.
Excused, I'm sorry, it's, it's already, well, it's only nine.
Yeah, it's still early.
So, yeah, and, and you would, and, you know, you have, and clearly through this, you have the ability to, to ask the council to have it excused. Now, just a second, the other part of it is, is if you had three absences and for some reason you didn't ask to have those unexcused, it's very clear when you start reading through the intent, the council would meet to discuss the forfeiture of office. And the big discussion there is whether any of the absences were excused or not. So it would be discussed then anyway. Okay, anyway, so, there was, uh, okay, Kevin?
Your second point is exactly what I was going to say, like, i- it's, and, and I hear what, what, uh, John's saying, but like, at that point, when you, it, when you, you know, get that third unexcused absence, it's gonna be discussed anyway. At that time, you could present and ask if those absences could be excused. And so you're not putting extra things on the agenda or anything like that. By the time the third absence comes, it's an issue at that point, and it's gonna get discussed anyway. So why not just put it all out at that time and call it good?
Because we'd have to have a separate meeting to do that. If you, if you do it at the end of the second one, then you don't have to go through the hassle of having a, a meeting to discuss forfeiture of office.
But, I mean, I think that if somebody's, you know, missing that many meetings, it probably needs to be discussed anyway, so.
Exactly, if you gets that three or more, right, I mean, then there should be a conversation.
Even if it's excused or not, you probably need to get together and discuss it.
But, but, but it hasn't, this is not an issue though, but this has not been an issue with council, that's correct. I mean, that's, I mean, we don't have a, it's not, we have a problem we're trying to address, is that?
That's correct.
Is that correct? I mean, that's where I'm probably struggling a little bit on creating a new procedure if we don't need to. I mean, it's fine, I think, to have your process, what you're saying, we bring it up, we talk about this if we need to, but.
And to John's point as well, is, a- after that third absence, you could go back and, you know, you could request that the absences be excused. It doesn't, because it doesn't give you a timeline of when those absences can be asked to be excused or not. So, I definitely understood your point about making sure that, that that procedure's done, but there isn't really a timeline wrapped around it.
So, closer to go home.
I'm just wondering.
No, 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 I, I'm, I'm ready to say something.
There you go.
Yeah, there you go.
Who I asked is, I've been listening to this whole thing here. Number one, you know, I look around here at six other individuals who I trust. I trust that they're mature, their decisions are good, uh, they're, 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 I mean, they're, they're, these aren't people that I worry about. Now, why in the world would I sit here and vote to get, kick them off the council after they have been elected by the citizens of the city? I mean, you know, you tell them, the citizens, you people don't know anything, you know, this, this person's not worth sending on the council. And so, I, I, I would be hard pressed, I don't care what the procedure is, what the rule is, uh, to do that. Personally, because they're, you know, I trust these people. And shit, there are in unforeseen, uh, circumstances that come up in people's life, uh, where they don't, they don't wanna talk about it. I mean, it might be something that, uh, and so it's gonna be difficult for them to even, uh, convey what the issue is. And I just don't, it, I just don't think that we're, uh, I understand what the charter said, but, uh, I'm not gonna. Unless it's something, particularly, unless it's the three things you were talking about, I mean, that's like, why?
Moral turpitude.
Yeah, moral turpitude, I worry about that all the time.
I could, I could see, uh, Bob's point, that if you had three members that had decided to boycott the council, perfect.
I mean, that's right, that's not, all of a sudden, they've lost my trust.
Yeah, I think that's an extreme.
They've lost my trust, so that's a whole different thing.
It, it.
Denver.
It, it took me a long time to understand, well, when I talked to Bob, he was very clear that, you know, and the word he used was, this is not intended to be a punitive me- measure. And that, that was like, I didn't think about it until he said, you know, the boy- I, I keep going back, I don't know if you guys remember when the, what was it, the Killer Bees boycotted the state senate back in, I can't remember. And, you know, they had, the, the state senate had no way to operate without them there, because they broke the quorum. And it basically set the state legislature in a, in a mode where they couldn't do anything. Very similar to what happened this summer with the, the house. And the, the, tho- those two bodies don't have this measure where they can remove their own members. And that, that's really what this is for. I mean, you know, we, it's the will of the council, we can, we can decide however we wanna handle it. We can stay status quo. Let me do the, let Ashley or Mike inform me that we have two absences, like, I'm not gonna see it. I talk to you, we can take an item to the consent agenda, at that point, take it as a excused absence.
So who will talk to you if you missed two?
The mayor pro temp.
Yeah, it'd be the mayor pro temp.
My objective here is to get a clarity on what happens. Because I got a letter from the city, hey, you missed two meetings, and if you miss third meeting, you'll be out. And when I asked that question to Ashley, she said she didn't know she was gonna discuss with Bob, Bob, and they will send us an email. So we got an email, and this is the information we have, so was no clarity to what exactly the steps city have to take if a council member misses that, that's the reason I brought it up. So we had a discussion about it, that's all it is.
Brianna?
And I was just gonna say, I mean, I, I think of the, the board decommission as being different, because, you know, you've got people who are, are interviewing for a particular position, the council's asking them to serve, where you've got council members who have been elected at large as, as, um, council member, long mentioned, and so, I just, I think of it as, as different. We, we're, when we meet with, when we meet with the boards and commissions, right, they, we, we outline certain things because we've got so many people that want to, to be a part of it, and yet, you know, um, again, people are like this. So, anyway, appreciate the conversation, because we're able to have clarity, and now people know, and now we know what's in the bylaws. I don't think we should fix something that's not broken. Um, I think in the time that we're currently in, where, I mean, even employers are being, even, and I don't know my employer is, I don't know about, I, I presume most employers right now are, are going above and beyond to show grace and compassion and empathy um, with the fact that there's just so much happening in this world, and asking to even put family first in many situations. Um, you know, I, I think it's just, I, I think we all know what we need to do and what our boundaries are, and we know that we're gonna be held accountable by those around us. And then, I think it's also important that if you really are concerned or curious or why someone's out, reach out and make sure they're okay. Right, or, um, check in on people. Because I know I can tell you that I sat around this table when someone at the helm did not show up, and we were extremely concerned, and it ended up.
Badly.
Badly, and so, take the time to show empathy and compassion before judging.
Okay. If anybody wants to change what we're doing, we can talk about it again, I'd like to suggest that we go think about it. I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with the policy or the procedure that I'm gonna follow. Um, I've got two items, and I don't, I'm hoping I'm not stirring the hornet's nest, but these were comments from Bob. Under Texas common law, a council member would continue to hold their position until the replacement is elected. That means that if you forfeited your office, under Texas common law, you would continue to hold your office. Now, think about that one.
And you can run for your office.
And, a member that forfeits the position is eligible to run for the same office again.
So does it, does it allow the legislative body to continue on though? Like, if it, if it was, let's say it was the three people breaking quorum, and you couldn't do anything because you don't have quorum, but now you've got three people who have forfeited their office, could you start?
No, under, under.
Taking action again?
Under the charter, no, under the charter, if you have less than a quorum present, then the existing council members can appoint, um, the number of members required to get up to a quorum. They can't appoint seven, but they appoint up to five, so that you have a quorum present.
So there would be a method to at least start? Because I thought that was the whole intent was to, so you could restart, actually action.
Yeah, and that, that comes under another section about, uh, vacancies and how you fill vacancies.
Yeah.
But it was, the, the, the four members that are present can appoint a person at, a citizen to fill the fifth position. They can't appoint, as I read it, they can't appoint more than one, they can only appoint up to a quorum.
Well, I'm okay if we continue to think about it, I'm ready to say, we're, I'm okay with what you've outlined and the process of, you know, just keep them, we all just sort of keep us all honest, you know, and just sort of go, we don't, I don't think we have a problem, at least, that's my per- my perception.
Well, and to John's concern, if, if, if it is, uh, more of a concern after this meeting, but, the council can, that, you know, we can further clarify by amending the charter, not changing it, but just clarifying what, what the procedure is, not, not the procedure that I was talking about before, but, to your concern about it saying that they shall, just, and, you know, there's shall and may, and when you hear shall, it's like, there's no exceptions. Um, but then it does say that the city council shall be the final judge. So there is some wording that we could put in there to clarify that, you know, possibly that failure to attend three consecutive regular council meetings without being excused is, makes somebody eligible for relinquishing their office, and then the city council shall be the final judge. So, if that is a concern, that's something that we could.
Uh, I was just pointing out that it seemed like there's a procedure, but it wasn't really, you know, right.
I have a clarifying question that goes to, um, what you brought up earlier in work session was, um, so going forward, the language that is needed so that a council member will be able to attend um, a regular meeting, will be, uh, remotely, will be included going forward in the agenda?
Yes.
Um, and so with that said, then, it, um, there still has to be a quorum of council members in person, but a council member who happens to be away could still attend and participate.
I sent Mike a note.
And be attended.
And one, you can be seen and heard.
I can be seen and heard, you have to be seen and heard, yes.
Does that have a good connection, you know?
I sent Mike a note back, the way that the, the text is written says one or more, it's actually, we can't have more than two on video, because then you don't have a quorum here.
Right, right, but if somebody happens to be away, they wanna be remote, they have to be seen and heard, and, but like, as you said, I mean, you can be in the beginning, you're counted a tenant, and, I mean, there's just opportunities for us to.
All right, anybody have any other comments on this item? If not, the time is nine oh one, and we are recessed from work session. And we'll reconvene in regular session.
You have to change chairs.
Yes, you have to go change here, so you can leave.
Good evening, the time is nine oh three PM. We have recessed from work session, and we're reconvening into regular session of the Capitol City Council. There being no further business before this council, we are adjourned at nine oh three PM.